What's that doing?
Because I was supposed to pick up caramel corn and I forgot.
Oh, no.
You know, I get the big bag. I don't mess around. And then I was downtown twice. And I completely forgot. And there he goes, where's your caramel corn? Ah, I'm not coming down for the third time. I'll come down tomorrow. Oh, I love it. And obviously, there he goes too. You're all over the place. Well, I'd love to keep it local here for good.
I deal mostly with, um...
I hear you.
He's retired, but I deal mostly with some other people on this staff. They're really nice. They come through. They're local. I like it.
You don't bother them?
Yeah. I have never had a problem, and I know that they're looking for work, so at least they were.
It's like you're stealing a reasonable picture. This is exactly how you're in this.
Let's run by a woman.
Go, go, apologize. They don't have a conversation today.
I know.
If you don't, I'm gonna throw you out of school.
Well, it'd be nice if they got the lowest bid, but...
He's an interesting guy.
They didn't.
Good evening. It's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the work session to order. I understand Melanie Baker is gonna speak in behalf and bring us an update on the new Kent City Hall. Melanie?
Well, while she's doing that, I'll just say...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. She looks like she's...
I got it.
She's already... Okay, she's got it. Well, first of all, we welcome Melanie back as being healthy again, and she's defeated COVID. Yeah. So that, we're all grateful for that, because a city hall project was gonna be in limbo until she could recover. For tonight, we only got about 25 minutes, I think, so our goal here is to give you a reasonably quick update. It somewhat sells it short, because Melanie and Nancy have spent a lot of time going back through the bids that we received on the city hall, understanding, talking to contractors, bidders, understanding where the pricing was higher than expected. The mayor promised me this morning that he heard that the inflation rate is now leveling off and gonna be going down for building materials, so I'm gonna hold into that. But let's hope he's right. I mean, no one knows, really, right? We're gonna do our best guestimates. I will say, we've obviously also been running a lot of numbers. Rhonda's got... We've had, feels like dozens and dozens of spreadsheets that we've been kinda like looking at. But our goal is not to necessarily get into that level tonight. If you've got a whole lot of questions on this after tonight, or as we near the end of this, that aren't answered, please know that we'll plan to just come back and committee next... Well, it's not two weeks. There's an extra week at the end of. So if it turns out you got a lot of questions, we'll come back. Honestly, it's mostly, we're looking for sort of that verbal affirmation that, okay, the bids came in too high. State law requires us to go back out to bid if we wanna build a building. And so Melanie is ready to do that. They've revised their estimates. And we kinda wanna do that as quick as we can, just to... Like you know, right now, interest rates continue to be favorable. I'll put one little plug on... So when we started this back in 2018, Dave Coffey did estimates on about a seven, a seven and a half million dollar building. We thought it would be about that much. And interest rates back then, he was forecasting the best rate might be 3%, the highest rate might be 5%. Well, if you look at the annual payments of a $7.5 million building at 3% versus the, what's now looking like an 8.3 or 8.5 million dollar building at 1.87%, which is the current rate, the payment is almost identical. So the bad news is it's a million dollars more. The good news is we can take advantage of the interest rates so we're not really impacting our net annual basis. So anyways, I said more than I should. I said it was gonna be short, so Melanie, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, so I'm before you tonight to kinda give you a quick glimpse back where we started and how we got to where we are today. So just so that you know, this was properly bid. We advertised on July 6th of this year. We did have a pre-bid meeting and a walkthrough of the building on July 22nd. And then the bids were publicly opened on August 10th. And before you is the bid sheet that was done on that date. The city received 16 bids. The bids ranged from the lowest bid of 8.5 million to the highest bid of $9,927,000. The architect's estimate when we went out for bid was $7,300,000. Even if we had added the 10% for that, we would only have been at $8 million. So therefore, all of the bids that you have before you came in over the state law amount of 10%. With the lowest bid being 16% over the architect's estimate. After a review of the bids and concerns for the estimate, it was determined that several factors played a role in this increase. The economic times were a big factor. The recent prices for wood products, along with escalating prices for steel, were reflected in these bids. The glazing and ceramic tiles seemed to be a bit more costly. And some have said it is the availability of materials that were causing us some of these problems, but others felt it was also the availability of skilled labor to put them in. Finally, the site itself did lend a little bit to some of these prices just because we had a lot of masonry that would have to be put into place in order to build into that hill. One of the things that I felt was most confident about the design of the building was that we had 16 bids. The lowest, six bids were between 8.5 and 9 million. So it was only a $500,000 swing at that point. This would indicate that this was a favorable building to bid, to build. It sparked interest of several people. It was made of good quality products. And I think council had value engineered us and this building by limiting the amount of space we took up on the site, along with the floors, the blueprints. We secured appropriate space for work areas and the public, but we also made sure that we understood and we were prudent with the design and choices of our interior finishes. This was actually shared with me as I had an opportunity to talk to several of the contractors that bid. They did feel that this was an extremely well-built building. There was no surprises in there for them with some exorbitant or extravagant materials. They felt that everything that was in there had been really down to the minimums that they felt that they would have seen in a building of this size for the need of the city. While all the bids reflected an increase in material pricing, most of the bidding was consistent, which would indicate to me that there were no busts in the project, and contractors and suppliers provided what the current industry standard of cost was. As we've seen over the last year and a half, anything can happen. The industry seems to be leaning now towards increased pricing a little bit, especially for our steel, but then leveling out on other items. However, as we talked to many of the contractors, myself and Nancy as well, they don't really see us leveling back to normal as what we might have been in 2016, 17, and 18. They feel that there's gonna be a length of time before we see that normalcy come back down for us. With that said, after confirming with several contractors, I feel that this building, and they've committed to this as well, that it is solidly designed, not overly built, and finished material are not outrageous or excessive for the use of the building. The architect, Nancy, and I have had a chance to analyze the estimates, review the bids, and look at the industry as a whole. After further review and taking into consideration the demo and the fat assets of construction, the amended architect's construction estimate, including furniture and contingencies, really takes us to a 9.2. So what that's saying is that we're estimating construction itself is at 8.3 million dollars for this building. Then you will have the furniture of about 180 to add to that. And then we will have a contingency in there, as you always do, for unknowns that happen perhaps underground when we go to do that demo and then rebuild that building. I am here before you tonight because I believe that the most prudent move is to rebid this project with the architect's amended construction cost estimates. I would bid this for four weeks, giving construction contractors time to confirm numbers and hopefully maybe sharpen pencils, or at least make sure that we're within that ballpark. In the end, I am respectfully asking council for more money. We were approved for 7.3 in construction, and I am now before council, as I have stated, looking at an 8.3 million plus the furniture, as well as that 10% contingency. If council can approve this dollar increase in October, I would be looking at bidding this, hopefully maybe on October 10th, opening the bids on the 11th, and awarding before the end of the year.
So as far as that goes for the money, Rhonda would bring a budget appropriations amendment at one of your next meetings, asking for you to authorize that additional dollars. Keep in mind, the plan at this point remains to borrow that, and we can get into the details of the borrowing. So like I said, it is about a million dollars more. The rates are favorable, so it's essentially a net. And also keep in mind, you probably forget this, because I almost did. When we started this in 2018, we were projecting paying off the, this building, the debt that was on this building, which was about a quarter of a million dollars a year in debt payments. And we did pay it off in 2020. So we removed 250,000 a year in our annual payment. And as rates stand right now at the dollar amount that Melanie's talking about, we're projecting it being about 430,000 a year, so subtract 250, so the net growth is... I will do the math. 430 minus 250, sorry. Thank you. 180. So that, in grand picture, it's about as affordable a way as we can manage this, I think. And again, we're just very grateful that the interest rates remain low. And Rhonda can talk about this too. I mean, she's been the one that's knee-high in it, so...
Roger will start, come around the corner.
Yeah. Does this include, this bid include the demo of the old police station?
Absolutely, yes.
So didn't we, when we sold the property across the street, don't we have a net amount sitting there as well as... Because as I recall, when we were talking about this, it was paying off this building, taking the, what, 1.2 roughly?
We've got 1.4 left from the original. It was 2. something, 2.1.
2.4.
And we spent a lot of that on the architect. We would recommend, given the fact that our income taxes continue to decline, and I've gotta come up with money, I need cash in pocket right now, because I don't know what's coming. So I have, you, we have a million four as a potential safety net. So yes, you could apply it to make the loan even less, make it upper sixes, lower sevens, but that's not our recommendation.
Okay, one last question then. But in the end, what we were projecting it was gonna cost percentage-wise, what we were paying for our loan, really it's a wash, even with the addition.
Yes, I mean...
Through the taxpayers, we're not paying any more.
Correct, correct. That's correct.
I think that's important, but everyone knows that.
You finished, Roger?
Mm-hmm.
Michael?
Now, where, the money that was set aside from the new police station when they passed the levy to demolish that, where does that money come in?
It is still there, and we will utilize that, because we do have the demo as a separate line item and dollar amount, so we will pay for that through that funding. And if I'm not mistaken, Rhonda, that is through the capital for police?
Yeah, it's on 303.
So it is there, yes.
So that would offset the 8.3 million also, correct?
Yes, yes.
How much, you know how much that is, set aside?
We think a couple hundred thousand, right?
Correct. We're estimating around two.
Are you done, Michael?
Yeah, I'm done.
Heidi, you had your hand up?
Yeah, my question really relates more to time. So when's the earliest we could see the demolition occur? Because like, it sounds like, last time we talked, I thought we were going to separate that from the construction, just so that we can see some, the public can see some progress, and we don't have to keep going by this building that looks more and more decrepit.
Well, we could pull that out and bid that separately. We would have to ask for a separate amount for that, but you'd be looking at the same timeframe, because I would need four weeks to bid that as well. Because I am over the threshold of just being able to award that. So keeping it also unified, I still feel is the better way to go, because I don't have contractors pointing fingers at the end of the day. We did have quite a bit of that, actually, with the police department, because there were three different contractors with demo, removal, underground, and then the contractor coming in to put stuff in, and that led to some of the issues that we did have.
So what's the earliest we could expect a demolition to occur?
It depends how soon I can be out for bid.
Would that occur in the winter?
Yes, yes. It would not be this year, though, because even at best, if I could bid with the schedule that I've laid out, we wouldn't be opening till November 8th. I would award by the end of the year, probably mid-December. And then by the time the contractor got all bonds, we're able to mobilize, we'd be looking at February, March.
And we have had some asbestos mitigation or...
All of that's been taken care of, 100%.
So that, that would not then be included in bids, because it's already been taken care of?
That's correct. Which allows for a more expedited demolition and moving on to building.
Further, Heidi?
John?
There's been some speculation that construction costs are expected to drop by 11% by the end of the fiscal year. Now, if I'm seeing information like that, our contractors probably are looking at the same information, I would imagine. And I guess, I guess what I'm thinking is, we should be able to get this building up for under 8 million. And why, you know, so why do we wanna go a whole billion over when maybe we should look at 8 million or less for approval?
Well, I...
And try to get a bid in here, because there's some real close coming in at 7.9.
I was gonna say, I don't, 8.5 was my lowest.
8.5 is the lowest bid.
But the issue that I have is that when we did start investigating with the contractors on this, most of them, while they would agree that materials may drop, they don't believe that labor is going to probably follow in that same suit. So a lot of them are a little nervous about what's gonna happen. I know that at least two of the contractors that I spoke with personally know that before the end of this year, they will see at least two more hikes in salaries. And they know that they've already been instructed by the unions that they'll see one each quarter of next year. Usually, those raises happen in March, and then those are sustained for a year. So I think they're a little nervous with what the future does hold for that. I guess I would be nervous of trying to go too low and then running into the same issue of having too low of an architect's estimate, that we would not be able to award again. And I'm not sure that it's a cycle that we want to repeat.
Well, now, I don't know if all these contractors are total union contractors or not, but being not federal money involved in this, I'm sure some of the contractors aren't paying prevailing wage on this project.
I'm sorry, but they are required to pay prevailing wage.
They are.
It is a publicly bid project, yes.
Because it's public. And are they union or non-union contractors?
It's across the board.
John, further?
No.
Anybody this way? Mr. Ferrer? Any other questions?
Yeah.
Oh, right.
I was wondering, when the bid process of Dillon would be reopened, are only the previous bidders allowed to bid in the project again? Or is it open to anybody again? Just reopening the whole process?
That's correct. It'll be completely reopened to the entire public again.
Thank you.
We would sort of expect, given the fact that this group has already gone through a lot of effort to do a first round, we're more than likely gonna see a lot of those same names. Maybe not the ones, as Melanie said, that are at the top of the list. Maybe they're saying, you know, we've got enough work... I mean, we're guessing that some of these folks, as is often the case, are busy enough that they threw a real high number in there and said, "I really don't have the time to do this job, but if they wanna pay me that much, I'll do it." But you could, as Melanie said, we've got five or six right bundled together near the, you know, the low bids. We think, I mean, our expectation, and I don't know, is that indicated in your conversations with the contractors? Did you get any sense that they would also rebid on it?
I believe that they would, yes. And again, I believe that they'd be sharpening pencils. Now again, I can't make that promise. And is sharpening 10 cents, or is sharpening 100,000? I don't know.
Heidi, are you done, Dave?
I am. Thank you, ma'am.
Heidi?
Yeah, as far as a bid is concerned, are we just looking at a number, or do we take any other factors into account? For example, sometimes we have to take into account minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, and maybe are we looking at the possibility of taking into account local contractors and the ability to use local labor rather than importing labor from another county?
So there are no requirements for minority businesses or anything like you would typically see in our engineering side. There's a lot of parameters sometimes that they have to follow when they're taking in grant monies. So we do not have that as part of this. However, ordinances do tip our hat or lend our hat to locally-owned companies. So that is a part of this, but at this particular point, I don't have any bids that I can even consider that with.
I hope you noticed, number four is a Kent-based company.
Right.
Yep.
So we're real pleased. We're excited. It's a big project for them. It might be, you know, the biggest they've done, but I hope... And I know you met, Melanie specifically, met with Julie Brandle, the CEO, President. And, I mean, we're hopeful that she might reconsider too, so...
Well, some of them report each county based too.
Right, Hummel.
Garrett?
Melanie, I'm sorry if I missed this, but so we've come up, we used the architect's estimate when we placed the first bid.
Mm-hmm.
Do we use, is that, is the architect's estimate redone after those bids come in? And that's, so now, so, and what is that number that we're saying?
Yes.
Is that the 8.5?
8.3.
8.3.
8.3 is the construction estimate. That is correct. We did ask Nancy to go back and ask her estimators to do a full review again. She did do that. We were able to take a look at the areas that did kind of coincide with what we were hearing out there that we might have been a little low on, certainly within that ballpark. And they've amended that, and that's why we're now at the 8.3 for construction.
So, and I just wanna confirm, so we could almost be at 24% above our original estimate if this is 11% higher than the revised architect's estimate. And we can take up to 10, not, we can't go over 10% above the architect's estimate, right?
Correct.
So let's just say that's 25% higher than our original estimate. And it, what were the interest rates you were calculating, and how, tell me again how the payment is the same? Was it 25% higher?
I was gonna say, that's gonna be Rhonda.
Yeah, if you don't...
I know that they're lower and still coming in.
Rates haven't gone lower than they were a year and a half ago.
They were 3 back when we started this, and they're 1.87 right now.
Correct.
And 3 was the low end. It was, we weren't sure it was gonna go up at that time, but anyway.
You know what, I can, I can run those.
She can hand you. We did prepare something. We didn't wanna spend too much time, but we have some prepared for you.
Well, that makes sense then. I didn't realize they were 1.87, so...
Another question, Heidi. Do we have to wait until the bids are, have been approved and everything before we start to assemble the financing?
Yeah, that's a great question. That's what Rhonda was whispering in our ear over here. We were talking about the timing of this, because getting to the bond market as quick as we can is in our best interest. And so she does have to have the actual bids in hand. She can't just go based on estimates. Rhonda, do you wanna answer the rest of that, like the timing issue? Sorry. You might wanna mention what you just passed out, too.
Yes, so what I gave you is, the current rate is currently 1.87%. And so what I did is at these various amounts, calculated what the annual principal and interest would be at 1.87%. And then if we wait until the first quarter of 2022, the rates you'll see are gonna potentially go up to 2.35%. And these numbers are based on our financial advisor. If we wait until the first quarter of 2023, it goes up to 2.68%. So if you wait till, you know, the money or the bid were to come back down to 8%, by that time, we could potentially be paying more in principal and interest. And then the original estimates back from 2018 were 3 and 3.5%. And so I'm showing you, highlighted in yellow, the principal and interest at 7.5% or 7.5 million at 3% is pretty much equivalent to 1.87% for 8.5 million.
But it is a matter of timing. And so your question is well noted, and that's something Rhonda's anxious, and we were trying to make sure that the law directors... Because we sorta need your, Rhonda was calling it pre-approval. I don't know if that's the right word.
It's probably not, but, so if you, depending upon the direction you give to Melanie tonight, she then can go out for bid. Once those bids are due and opened, I have then 60 days in order to sign the certificate so that the contract does not change cost. So then, if we take it out, say hypothetical, October 7th is the bid opening. That gives me till December 7th, when I sign the certificate, saying that we have the money in hand. So I talked to the financial advisor and our bond counsel, and we're backtracking. In order to sign the certificate by that date, when do we have to start the bonding issue? And they know that I will be coming to you on October 6th with an ordinance for a bond issue, and that it won't be approved until the 20th of October. However, we can start the process once you approve on the 6th. And that's where getting our ducks in a row and just trying to make sure that we've got the appropriate documentation that they'll need for a POS, for the bond issue.
Roger?
Yeah, that, that will then lock in the 1.87 for us.
Well, it won't be locked in until the actual sale. So depending upon, so say if the sale goes into effect, if we need, maybe mid-November, it'll be whatever the rate is at that time and what we can get.
Okay.
It doesn't lock in until the actual sale.
Until the actual sale occurs.
And I think, from what my understanding from bond counsel, which I'm gonna have a conversation with them tomorrow, we're looking at potentially being able to sign the certificate, the certification for the contract, when the sale goes through, which is prior to the closure of the bond issue itself. We, the sale is done, it's just all the final details, not until later.
John?
What percentage are we receiving on the money that we're holding now from the...
It's not a lot. Interest rates are not good at all. I, everybody knows, right? We're doing the best that we can. You know, we're trying to space them out. I don't wanna lock in a high, what is considered higher for this point, but I don't wanna lock that in for a long period of time, just in case the interest rates do go up. So we're trying to invest, you know, for maybe two-year, three-year period. It varies, so we've got a lot that are coming due each year.
What type of return are we getting?
It's less than, it's probably 1% or less.
So that's offsetting that.
Correct.
Roger, John? Robin?
I don't wanna get too far afield off of the financing aspect, but I'm going to. Because I thought, quite honestly, that Heidi had raised some interesting questions as to benefit on the project, which is outside of the money catcher, to see how we can capture maybe local workers, benefit by a multiplier effect, by keeping money in the surrounding area. So it's kind of a payback, also the additional training and things that will help them as we move forward in the community. That seems to me probably to be a bigger issue for council to deal with in trying to see how you would apply that when we're looking at the bidding process, how you would incentivize these businesses to want to look at local people, to employ them. That's a little different than even forcing them. But by incentivizing it, so they get points maybe for hiring locals or minorities, or however we would like to create a kind of incentive track for them. I don't wanna do that late now, that it impacts, especially since this is also a timing issue, of finance and so on and so forth. But it has to be something we can consider and that I would like for you to consider so that we're not blowing things up, but helping to build back better.
Sure.
Well... I'm sorry, John, I don't understand.
Finish your question.
Oh, okay. That what we could do is apply that, and see if we can do that now without kind of monkeying up things. But trying to see how we might be able to include that in our ability to choose a company which would then meet some of our desires for our community, which I think is, would be a very positive thing.
Sure. I mean, I can take a look at how those things would be affected. I think that where we are and with the timing... that where we are, and with the timing that we have, that's gonna maybe be difficult to apply to this. I think long range, though, if you'd like us to take a look at that and see how we can make that happen, we can certainly look at that. I know that things in the past, not here, but in other areas, have done that, and sometimes just to meet that quota, they hire people that don't actually work, it ends up costing you more. So I think I'd like some time to look into that, before we say that that's what we have to do, but I can certainly take a look at how it could apply here, but I can't make any promises just with the timing.
Okay, we're kind of out of time. Dave, what direction do you need from us? Well, Roger, one more.
Yeah, yeah, are you ready for a motion?
Well, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we accept the recommendation to put out bids for the $8.3 million on the, the new city hall.
There a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferrara. Roger, is there further discussion?
No, I think, I, I, I have to applaud the administration, I think they've done their due diligence, they've been able to answer our questions specifically, I think that financially, it makes good sense. I think, I think anyone who looks at their own home finances, and they realize that they want to buy a new car, and they realize interest rates are low, now's the time to do it, and I think it's the same concept, whether it's a million dollars, or whether it's $20,000, it's the same concept. If we can save the taxpayers money in the long run, then I think we need to do it now. But I think if we wait another year, I think it's gonna cost them more money in the long run, let's get it built.
All right. Garrett, you have discussion?
I would echo Roger's comments, and you know what, we've, we've gotten lucky once, and you know what, it's not a good, it's not a good odd to take to try to wrestle with or, or play with taxpayer funding and interest rates, so the sooner we get it done, the better we are.
Okay, anybody else have comment? Mr. Kuhar.
I'll, I'll vote against it.
Point of order. Can't ask questions, comment.
You have discussion on the motion?
I thought we had discussion.
Discussion.
That's what I was doing.
Let's hear it.
I would vote against it, mainly because of the dollar amount, I, I'm all for putting it back out again at a lower dollar amount.
All right, I understand. Is there any other discussion? Heidi?
Yeah, I, I certainly wanted this to move forward, it's, you know, really important to do that. I guess I just hope that it's, there's some way that we can take into account some qualitative factors, as well as the quantitative factors, in the end.
Further? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right.
Thank you very much.
Order of. Order of control. Mike? Garrett?
I got it in here somewhere, you know, my stack, here we go. What do I got, what do I got?
Anybody needs to talk to council, please sign up with the clerk.
So we got the minutes, September 1st.
The longer you wait, the more expensive it's gonna get.
Well, you know, there's, there's, yeah.
I'll move approval of those people.
No, I know, yeah.
And I'm doing grant writing for two big capital projects, both of which came in.
Good evening, I'm gonna call the, September 15th, 2021, regular council meeting to order. Would the clerk please read the roll?
Mr. Amerine?
Here.
Mr. DeLeon?
Here.
Mr. Ferrara?
Here.
Mr. Kuhar?
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer-Bisch?
Here.
Mr. Sidoti?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
And Ms. Wallach?
Here.
Okay, any opening remarks, I'm gonna do the pledge.
Yeah, I'm really sick of wearing a mask, it's really difficult to teach wearing a mask, even though it's face-to-face, for crying out loud, just go get vaccinated.
Well said. When we say the pledge, remember Monday was the 20th anniversary of 9/11, keep that in our thoughts when we say this pledge today. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We need approval of the minutes.
Oh, I can't do it.
I'll move the regular council meeting minutes of August 18th, 2021, and the work session of September, we can.
There a second?
Second.
Second by John, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and one abstention. Public comments, would the clerk read the names?
The first resident is Doug Fuller.
All right, let me read my statement. Why the law does not require council to provide time for public comment, we have historically invited the public to make comment, and we appreciate their input. This is the time when residents and others can comment on matters that concern them. However, we will not engage in any debate, and as president of council, I reserve the right to end any public comments that are disruptive, embarrassment, harassant, or otherwise objectionable. We ask that you come to the podium, speak your name and address, and quarter into the mic, and we'll give you three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna keep this as quick as I can. My comments are about the architectural review design guidelines, that you talked about a couple of weeks ago. I just wanted to bring to your attention a couple of things and a couple of suggestions. Oh, I'm sorry, first of all, a couple of weeks, several, a couple of months ago, I was talking to you about the West Side Fire Station, and during that presentation, I made a.
Back up and give your name and address.
I'm sorry, my name's Doug Fuller, I live at 1431 River Edge Drive, I've been a, I'm a retired architect, been here and had an office for 44 years in the city of Kent, and was involved in the development of the original guidelines, which I'm gonna talk about just a bit of. But first, I was here talking about the fire station and the roof, and didn't like it and all that. I made an error in what I said, and I wanted to correct it, I'm, in there, which we'll talk about in just a second, the moving of the boundaries for the design district were made, and I made the statement that, that the building, that the Bell Tower Brewery was moved, so it was outside of the design guideline district, that was an error, it's clearly inside the design guideline district, and I want to apologize for you for that mistake, and also to Bridget for me making that mistake. So, with that, I want you to, a little bit up to date, I don't know if you people, you all remember this or not, but back in May of, May 9th, 2008, you approved Main Street Kent, in the city of Kent, to work on design guidelines. About a year and two months after we were asked to do that, working with money from the city and from the Burbank Foundation, we came up with this document, and you accepted this, I don't know if it was ever officially approved by the city, I, I know in the minutes it said it was accepted, I, I'm not sure with that, that, what the difference is. Unfortunately, our community, our, our community development director, for some reason, didn't like these guidelines, I do not understand why. I was very upset when we had spent as much time, with professional help, by the way, I'd heard of a rumor around town, someone said, this one was developed without any professional help. Well, I want to, I, I passed around this lady, Elizabeth Corbin Murphy, she is one of the, the finest preservation architects in the state of Ohio, you can see some of the awards that she's won there. So I want you to know, the group that formed this had great leadership, even though, I'll, I'll say there's some things in there that I would like to revisit, since it was done. All right, so this, you then accepted this in April 13th of 2011, this is what Gary Locke did as a revised version of the, of Architectural Design Guidelines. One of the things that's very clear to see, he eliminated a lot of graphics and information about design and design guidelines. One of the things, when people say it's confusing and difficult to use, heck yeah, you know, if you, if you go and, I'll try to lick your finger to show things, there, there's a table of contents, you know, if you want to look up something, what came up recently, color. You go to this, unfortunately, there's no table of contents, if you want to read about color in here, you gotta read through the whole thing, or try to thumb through it and find it. It's in there, it does address color, not perhaps as specifically as the conversation's in, but it's in there, it talks about color in the context of the building. What it doesn't, in ways that really needs to be revisited, it doesn't talk about, what do you happen, what do you do when you have a building like the one that Mike Peter has? It was a beautiful building at one time, and now it's been remodeled over years, so you don't even know what it used to look like, and so there's nothing about it that is, on the facade, very historic, while it remains a historic building because of when the body of the building was built. So things like that need to be addressed, and we looked at, we learned a lot in, in the, the years that we've, we've had. The, the boundary districts, unfortunately, you can't even, there's not even a boundary map in here, it's, you have to go to a separate place for it, in this one, the boundary is, is in there. The boundary was changed, I don't understand why, it does not seem like a logical change. So there's a whole bunch of things that I think are well worth visiting. So, my last comment, maybe the last comment, is, I don't think you got a lot of money to blow, you might want to take a look at this first, before you go spend a lot of money redoing it, because I think if you spend a lot of money redoing it, you're gonna get a lot of this back, with some additions that need to be done. Don't, I'm not saying this is perfect, it is not, but, I, I think you might be wise to take a look at it, it might be good somehow to get an assessment between what this is and what this is. I really can't tell you what was in here, because there's no way, unless you go line by line and try to find what, what the changes were. Last comment, whatever you do, I beg one of you to commit yourself to be part of that process. So when this comes back to you, whether it be picking in things like the color that someone's using, or it be big things, but, like some, another six-story building or something being built, someone, as a member of this group, really has knowledge from the community side of it, and you feel the impact of that, because you get these calls of people complaining about color, and they don't know where it came from, and you don't know where the decision, what the decision process was. So that's it. I'd love to be part of it, and, and I really think, but, from when I was here as a student in '68 to what we are now, it is just amazing what we've become. Little documents like this have helped along the way, it was a tremendous help, help when we had developers coming in, and, and we had no guidelines, except for that one that we were smashing together at that time, and it proved very valuable to get a product that was much better than what the developers were originally walking into town with. So, to all of that, I hope, I know you're taking it seriously, but, anyway.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Further?
Christopher Myers.
Mr. Myers?
My name is Christopher Myers, I live at 220 East Town Street. I will, I would like to start by singing a little song that we sang in grade school in the early 1940s, which is about racism, and I despise racism. This was the early 40s, this was, this was 20 years before the Civil Rights Act of 1964. We work and play together, we hear our country's call, no matter what our race or creed, we are Americans all. I think that pretty much says what we should be, I think so. But I, I'm gonna talk a little bit about, about racism in Kent, and I can be called racist, I mean, I've been called vulgar, I've been called a stalker, I've been turned into the police and the court for protesting. And I'm not gonna talk this evening about the NAACP's Gerald and Nelson's Letter to Council, and wish he be smirched as a member of council as racist and hard-hearted. Now, I've read everything, and I didn't see that there was anything that this man said at all that was racist. Nor will I talk about Health Commissioner Joan Seidel's inability to name a Kent racist, and an encounter I had with her downtown. I will, however, acknowledge and comment upon Councilman Amerheim's statement about Kent racism, that appears in the minutes of the 21 July 2021 regular council meeting. All along, I was under the impression that when the Kent City Board of Health declared racism a public health crisis, it was talking about words of deeds, things plainly, overtly right out in the open, and identified as being hurtful to the life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness of minorities. But Mr. Amerheim says that is not the case, and I understand Mr. Amerheim is on the, is on the health board, as the, as the council representative. According to Mr. Amerheim, the board is not saying that people in Kent are racist, but there seems to be social and cultural injustices that create a problem for minorities receiving healthcare. I would ask, who are the perpetrators of these injustices, and what are they doing? What he can't do is identify the perpetrators, of course he can't, because he asks, he instructs us, the health board members were saying the perpetrators are acting in an unseen, unheard manner, which he so well defines as being a covert type of situation. Now, I can see that there are situations, covert situations, where somebody can come to the health board, or come to the police, or come to somebody and say, hey, I was standing in that doctor's office, and that receptionist didn't even pay any attention to me for half an hour, or I went into the store and I was, and I was shunned by somebody working in the store. I can see that happening. What I don't, what I don't know, and what I would like to know, is what the Health Commission does about this. How do they verify it, and what do they do? Do they do anything, do they go talk to the store owner, just what happens here? And, let's see, what else have I got here, oh, the, the subwoofer man in the loud car, he's back on the streets, he just went past, he was convicted of it, and I just watched him go past. I know Heidi is bothered by this, too. What else have I got, oh, $8.3 million for a city hall, what? Boy, you people must think we have a lot of money. What else have I got, anything? No. I'm going home, I hope you like my song. Thank you, remember it, remember it.
Okay, public communications?
Notification of the Main Street Kent Oktoberfest event, which is set for September 25th, 2021, in downtown Kent, was received on August 19th, 2021. Email from the Standing Rock Cemetery Board requesting a joint meeting to appoint an upcoming vacant spot of the appointed Franklin Township Commissioner was received on August 20th, 2021. Email from resident Christine Weiss requesting the city reinstate the citywide mask mandate, received and forwarded to council on August 24th. A letter from the Ohio Citizen Action, along with 11 handwritten letters from residents requesting the city of Kent join the power A Clean Future Ohio and take the 30 by 30 pledge, received and forwarded to city council and members of the Sustainability Commission on August 27th. Standing Rock Cemetery Board of Trustees' August meeting minutes and agenda for September 9th was received on August 26th, 2021. The Kent City Health Board agenda for September 14th and the minutes from August 10th was received on September 9th, 2021. City of Kent zoning district map update from August 2021 was received September 9th, 2021. And an email from Christopher, Christopher Clevenger Morris, resigning from the Planning Commission, received and forwarded to council on September 9th, 2021.
We need a motion to accept that.
So moved.
Second. Second by Michael, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you.
Okay, and then communication received after the agenda was published, I received the Parks and Recreation September Board Report on Monday, September 13th, 2021. The Planning Commission Agenda and Staff Report for September 21st, 2021 was received September 15th, 2021. And lastly, I received a request from Paul Kuinsky, the Director of Licensing for the Division of Liquor Control, to cancel the, cancel the liquor license transfer request originally submitted in April for Olympia Hotel Management, doing business as Kent State University Hotel and Conference Center, and replace it with a new liquor license request with the same type of permit, privileges, and hours, et cetera. Chief Shear had no objection.
Move to return with no comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you.
That's all.
Mine was four, I was just late.
Got it.
I didn't have to text you for that.
All right, City Managers' Report, Mr. Amerine?
Yeah, I'd like to move items 1 through 13 on the City Managers' Report.
Second.
Second by Garrett, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Mr. Rohr, you have further?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, thank you, Jack. We're going to standing committees and legislation, committee whole, I need approval, I need a motion for.
Move the committee meeting minutes approval from September 1st to 20
Move the committee meeting minutes approval from September first, twenty twenty-one. And the three actions recommended?
Yeah.
Separate those.
Second by who? Roger? Oh, hi, Tracy.
So I'll just do the action.
Okay.
No, you just give them the minutes.
Let's back up, Mike.
Okay, we'll do the...
Minutes.
Minutes.
All right. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by John, is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. One abstention.
The other ones are going to be opposed. And I'll move all three actions.
Second. Second by Roger, is there any discussion on the action?
Do we need the second one? Do we need the second one? The second one's still, is that moot? The second action?
Oh, yeah.
That would be moot. So just one and three? Yes.
Just one and three. I never had so much conversation. Is there a second? Yes.
Actually, yeah, two is a moot point, because he already resigned.
So I'll just move one and three.
All right. Who's second?
Second.
Roger. Okay, now, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, I got a comment before I have a quick read to draft, but, by charter, we appointed a salary review commission, they did their diligence, they came back with the recommendation, and it's understood that we are not voting on a raise for us personally, it's for the incoming new seats that will be after the next election. So I want that understood publicly. With Court Read Draft Number twenty twenty-one oh ninety-two entitled only.
Draft number twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-two, an ordinance setting the rate of pay for the at-large county, city council members and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Heidi. All right. Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Amerheim?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
And Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Adoption. Second.
Second by Heidi, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Amerheim?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
And Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-two has passed.
Okay, thank you. With Court Read Draft Number twenty twenty-one oh ninety-three entitled only.
Draft number twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-three, an ordinance setting the rate of pay for the ward council members and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second. Second by Roger, please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Amerheim?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second. Second by Roger, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Amerheim?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-three has passed.
Okay, thank you. With the Court Read Draft Number twenty twenty-one oh ninety-four entitled only.
Draft number twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-four, an ordinance setting the rate of pay for the mayor of Kent, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second. Second by Roger, please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Amerheim?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Oh, second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion on adopt, adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Mr. Amerheim?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-five has passed.
Okay, thank you. With the Court Read Draft Number twenty twenty-one oh ninety-five entitled only.
Draft number twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-five, an ordinance to approve the current replacement pages to the city of Kent codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
I'll put John as the second. Please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Amerheim?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-five has passed.
Okay, thank you. That's it for Committee of the Whole, Committee Development. Mr. Kuhar?
I would move the committee meeting minute approval for September first.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. One abstention.
Do you want these actions separated?
No.
I move the two actions.
Second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. One abstention.
Do you want these actions separated?
No.
I move the two actions.
Second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. With the Court Read Draft Number twenty twenty-one oh ninety-six entitled only.
Draft number twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-six, an ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to develop guidelines for funding of the neighborhood grant program to allow for community enrichment slash engagement and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar, please call the roll for suspension.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerheim?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar, is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerheim?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-six has passed.
Okay, thank you. With the Court Read Draft Number twenty twenty-one oh ninety-seven entitled only.
Draft number twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-seven, an ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to enter into a license agreement between the city of Kent and Main Street Kent to install and maintain an art piece and associated landscaping and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second. Second by Roger, please call the roll for suspension.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerheim?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second. Second by Roger, is there any discussion on adopting this? Please call the roll for adoption.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerheim?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-seven has passed.
Okay, thank you. That's it for Community Development.
Health and Public Safety, Mr. Amerheim?
Yeah, I'd like to move the minutes from the September first, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abstained.
One abstention.
And I'd like to move the three actions recommended.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Passes. All right, that's it for Health and Public Safety. Nothing under lane use, streets and sidewalks, Mr. Sedoti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move the committee meeting minute approval for September first, twenty twenty-one.
Second. Second by Jack, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abstained.
One abstention.
I'd like to also move the one action that's recommended.
Second.
Second by Mike, is there any discussion on the action? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. With the Court Read Draft Number twenty twenty-one ninety-eight entitled only.
Draft number twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-eight, an ordinance amending section three fifty-three point zero-two of the codified ordinances of the city of Kent, titled Parking Regulation Authorization to Allow for On-Street Parking on the East Side of Walnut Street Between Cherry and Harris Streets and Declaring an Emergency.
Move suspension.
Second. Second by Mike, please call the roll for suspension.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Amerheim?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer-Bish?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh ninety-eight has passed.
Okay, thank you.